Councilwoman Gogian.
Here.
Councilwoman Hahn.
Here.
Councilwoman Byers.
Here.
Councilwoman Lord.
Here.
Councilwoman Streetman.
Here.
Councilwoman Popsis.
Here.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
Mayor Quan.
Thank you. Item two is election of mayor pro tempus. It's a one-term, one-year election, so we'll hold in the forward for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to make a motion to nominate Councilwoman Lord.
Second.
Are there other nominations?
I would like to make a nomination for Rusty Streetman.
Second.
Other nominations? All right. Nominations are closed. We'll vote in order of nominations. So all those in favor of Councilwoman Lord, say aye.
Aye.
And a whole hand up.
All in favor.
Thank you. Rusty, thank you.
You're welcome.
You were last year. I know you had to sit in a couple of times for me on various things. And I guess Jimmy will start calling every day to check on my health.
He should.
Thank you all.
Item three, citizens' comments.
Nicole.
Ted McKnight.
Start.
Mm-hmm. I'm Ted McKnight, and I'm a resident of Isla Palms. I'm here tonight to talk about the ongoing survey about SCDOT's proposed changes to our Big Bridge, also known as the Connector. I'm opposed to the survey. Why? Because the survey has major flaws in and to it. What are the flaws? Even before we get to the survey itself, the process has a major flaw. Several days ago, I was told by an IOP resident that by accident she found out that you can vote more than once. You can vote as many times as you want. She reported this flaw. She said she was told that the private firm running the survey for SCDOT had no way to limit the survey to one person, one vote, so it's a stacked deck. Getting to the survey itself, the major flaw of the survey provides for five options. It needs to have a sixth option. What would the sixth option be? None of the above. Why none of the above? Because not one of SCDOT's five proposals provides for a safety barrier between the vehicular traffic and the pedestrian and bicyclists. If intelligence, common sense, and decency aren't enough to convince you of the need for a safety barrier, then look no further than the Ravenel Bridge. It was anticipated that pedestrians and bicyclists would use the Ravenel, and a separate walkway/bicycle path was included with a protective safety barrier between the cars and the pedestrians. Apparently, the pedestrian bicycle paths across our bridge are an afterthought, and all it takes now to include them is a little bit of paint, which is not exactly a safety barrier. I'm under the impression that Georgia and North Carolina have a safety barrier that would work on our bridge, then why not include an option that has a safety barrier? The number-one requirement of government, federal, state, or local, is to provide for the safety of its citizens, which then leads to the obvious questions. Why isn't safety the main issue of our bridge? And why would we ever forfeit our right to guarantee our safety to the state, which has demonstrated that our safety is not their number-one concern? In an earlier question on the flawed survey, safety was included as one of the four choices, and it is another example, in my opinion, that safety is given lip service, that it is important, but not number-one when it comes to traffic and the IOP. When you lose home rule, this is an example of what happens. Several years ago, I spent much time and effort with regards to parking on Palm Boulevard. I wanted safe parking. SCDOT wanted lots of parking. Safety was not number-one, so we got lots of unsafe parking. Please, do your jobs, put safety first, and ignore the "survey," and don't let SCDOT hoodwink council. You can't balance safety and convenience at the expense of safety.
Mr. McKnight, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Pardon me?
You have a three-minute limit that you've met?
Can I have 15 more seconds?
Yes, sir.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Oh. You can't balance safety and convenience at the expense of safety. Safety is always number-one. Convenience is far down the list. If you don't think so, then answer this: How many deaths are acceptable in order to have convenience for pedestrians and bicyclists when crossing our bridge? Thank you, and thank you for the extra time.
Mayor Pounds and council members, thanks for your help in resolving major issues happening on our beloved island. It is no small feat to take on changing ordinances, short-term rental issues, and hopefully soon reinstating home rule on IOP. Another major issue on our island now is how we spend our 30% ATAX money, and I am here to speak with you about it again. When the ATAX Committee decided to investigate how the Charleston Visitors Bureau had been spending these funds for over 25 years, their findings included the following: There is no bidding from competitors or a contract, even though state law requires both. There is no procurement code or metrics to measure how CVB spends the money it receives from IOP. According to their 2018 tax returns, the CVB has over 100 employees with annual salaries upwards of $5.4 million. Their tax statements do not reveal business trip expenses, but we know they take them, including one to Europe where $1,000-a-night hotel rooms and parties are pictured on the Internet. Money from CVB bank accounts has been transferred to and from accounts in the Cayman Islands. Money is spent by CVB to pay for their brick-and-mortar buildings, pricey printed brochures, to promote downtown events like Seaweed, Spoleto, a Kiowa golf tournament, and downtown hotels. Money spent on advertising for IOP goes almost solely on one Sweetgrass Hotel and its conference amenities, while short-term rental owners get nothing. Maybe we should consider giving CVB the amount of money they spend on the island hotels only. How much would that be? $150,000 of the $1 million we gave them last year? The ATAX Committee put together a presentation of these and other findings, and it was delivered on September 21, 2021, at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, when Mayor Pounds was the chair. Mayor Pounds commented afterward, "Best presentation I've heard," and he noted, "It's a lot of money." Councilmember Moy noted, "After learning of new Turk regulations, we'd be on the hook and have to give back the money." Councilmember Streetman remarked, "Compelling, great info. The concerns expressed to Helen Hill at CVB are well-founded. There is no transparency from CVB, which makes it impossible to measure compliance with state code. New Turk rules require local governments to be held accountable for planned expenditures and review of actual expenditures." The ATAX Committee has been asking for more transparency for years now. Instead, members of this committee have been told things like, "That's our secret sauce, and we can't reveal it to you," or even, "It's none of your business." ATAX Task Force member Curtis Kay stated, "We've tried accountability in the past, and it hasn't worked. We should control our own destiny and not be dependent on Helen Hill to give us a website." Why have you all continued to hand over these funds to CVB? The time is now to make better use of the projected $1.5 million in the upcoming budget. Thank you. Mike Campbell.
Thank you. I'm going to continue with my wife's speech.
Hey, Mike, will you pull the mic up just a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yes.
The city of Isla Palms is on track to stroke a check this year to the CVB for $1.5 million with no bidding, no budget of projected expenses for IOP, specifically no transparency, no metrics, no procurement code, and no contract. You may also have been told, "We have no choice." The truth is, we do have a choice. A lawyer currently on the ATAX Committee has agreed to set up a 501(c)(3) entity similar to the Folly Beach Tourism and Visitor Promotion Committee. This entity would then oversee spending, fulfilling the state requirement in Section 6410 that a nonprofit organization receives the funds. This statute also has another sentence that reads, "To be eligible for selection, the organization shall demonstrate that it has an existing, ongoing tourism promotion program or that it can develop an effective tourism promotion program." Folly has been successfully using this model since 2004. The Folly Committee then selects a regional tourism DMO that has an ongoing tourism promotion program to advertise and oversee their website. The committee can tailor ads to local needs. They currently use Little Dog Agency, who presented to the ATAX Task Force on April 21 last year. They get a budget and a report of expenditures with full transparency. Folly Tourism Committee also has a classification of spending called Visitor Enhancement Projects that provide overnight guests with a safer and more enjoyable stay. Some examples of expenditures for which they have used 30% ATAX money are: Purchase of mobile restrooms placed at either end of the beach in season, reconstruction of the Folly Pier, public water fountains seating at the River Boat Landing, welcome signage, and engineering study for pedestrian walkways and beach wheelchairs. They also use funds to promote and run festivals in the off-season to help short-term rental occupancy during those times. Additionally, you may have been told that there is an opinion letter from the State Attorney General's Office telling our city that we have to use CVB as our DMO. But I have it on good authority that, from our State Treasurer's Office, that this letter will not hold up in court. Further, it would be up to the State Treasurer's Office to sue IOP. There are many municipalities that use the Folly Beach model, and none have been challenged yet, as of yet. Obviously, CVB is not meeting the needs of the Isla Palms tourist or residents. There has been no change of accountability or transparency from them to us. What I saw during the last umpteenth presentation they gave us was a new IOP website domain, which strangely enough had many surfing videos and photos. Seriously, this is really not surfing.
Mr. Campbell, can you wrap that up?
The CVB has been our DMO for over 25 years, and they don't even know us. I ask this council to move forward. The amount of money we are talking about demands action now, before council approves the next budget. Why stroke a check to CVB for $1.5 million and get nothing in return? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for signing up and speaking. Next is special presentations, and the first one is pretty exciting: Retirement recognition of Joe Washington, who served a 42-year career in the Public Works Department. I'm going to move the podium and come down front real quick. Joe, if you want to come up, and Donnie, if you do, and Joe, if you have people here with you. Come on down, man. You're not going to get off of that easy.
Joe, a comment real quick for you. Senator Chip Camson has this resolution made on the Senate floor of South Carolina.
I'm just going to read it for you real quick, all right? You good with that?
Yes, sir.
So this is introduced by Senator Camson. Senate Resolution to congratulate Joseph Washington upon the occasion of his retirement, to commend him for his 42 years of dedicated service, and to wish him much happiness and fulfillment in the years ahead. Whereas, the members of the South Carolina Senate are pleased to recognize Joseph Washington upon the occasion of his retirement from the Isla Palms Public Works Department. And whereas, a native of Mount Pleasant, Mr. Washington is a graduate of Wando High School. And whereas, Mr. Washington began his career with the Isla Palms Public Works Department as a CDL driver on September 18, 1980. Whereas, during his years with the Public Works Department, Mr. Washington operated heavy equipment for debris operations. He oversaw front-loading operations for the city prior to Hurricane Hugo, and he was also in charge of emptying original Yellow Beach barrels on the beach manually with a tractor pulling a trailer. And whereas, over the years, Mr. Washington has worked with exemplary dedication in his roles and has become a respected supervisor who demonstrates loyalty and consistency. And whereas, Mr. Washington has three children and two grandchildren. And whereas, in his retirement, he looks forward to fishing three days a week and traveling the world. And whereas, the members of the South Carolina Senate appreciate the passion and dedication that Mr. Washington has shown in serving the people and the state of South Carolina, now therefore be it resolved by the Senate, that the members of the South Carolina Senate, by this resolution, congratulate Joseph Washington upon the occasion of his retirement, commend him for his 42 years of dedicated service, and wish him much happiness and fulfillment in the years ahead. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Joseph Washington. Joe, we're not done. Stay right there, man. So we've got one more item. We were talking before this meeting started, looking around the room. It was a question might have been, how many people are even 42-years-old? Probably only a couple that aren't, but... It's impressive, so thank you so much for what you did for our city for so many years before a lot of us even got here. One other piece we have for you is, we've done this the last couple of retirements, it's a Beechwood court board, something.
Wooden.
Wooden. It's wooden. Let's go there. Of the IOP. Your team member signed it on the back for you, so again, just a token of, very small token of our appreciation for your service. So thank you very much.
Very briefly, some close to 23-years ago, I was hired by the recreation staff to become grounds and maintenance supervisor. I quickly learned who I could count on. We worked through interdepartmental a lot back then, and we crossed a lot of apparatus. There was a big tractor there. We did a lot of things together. But operationally, I knew that Joe was the man who did the day-to-day operations. He and I quickly became business partners, friends, and we got along very well, and we worked hand-in-hand together with me borrowing equipment, taking it to the wreck, bringing it back. So I had a relationship established, and some year and a half later, I was fortunate enough to take on the responsibility of the Public Works Department. And that relationship continued to grow. I knew that if I had to leave for any reason, that day-to-day operations would carry on. He knew this island. He knew all the residents of the island, and those relationships we cannot match. We can certainly replace the job, but we can't match the relationships that Joe built with all these residents. And that's what's so important and key, is the longevity of the, all of these public works staff. The staffing, and we have low turnover in the Public Works Department, and a lot of that is due to Joe and his leadership. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation of a request from Charleston County Recycling to change the recycling collection date from Wednesdays to Thursdays starting April 1. With us tonight is Randy Rudd, Director of Charleston County Environmental Management Department.
Thank you for allowing me to attend council. I appreciate that very much. I am Randy Rudd. I'm the new Director of Environmental Management for Charleston County. And as the mayor notes, we would like to request the council's consideration of changing the collection day for recyclables from current Wednesday to Thursday. This will allow us to keep that schedule year-round, even during the summer period, so that during that period between Memorial Day and Labor Day, all collections would remain on Thursday. The original program, last year, as I understand it, you know, Republic collected one Wednesday, the county collected the other Wednesday to fill that role, but the county's now out of collections. So we've worked with Republic, and it's, they're not capable of keeping it on Wednesday, so we felt that rather than having one week on Wednesday and one week on Thursday, it would make a lot more sense just to switch to Thursday. So that's the request we're making.
And I know you are the messenger tonight. What will this do to consistency of service, you know, since the outsources happen? You know, I don't think anybody would deny that there's been some spotty consistent service on the island. What's this going to do?
Yes, sir. That was my primary directive when I got to the county, was to try to improve that. We've been working with Republic. They've added routes. They've added drivers. Over the past couple of months, things seem to have gotten a lot better. This will definitely help with that. By keeping it on the same days, we're going to be able to keep same drivers on those routes and improve consistency. And, you know, I've worked with city staff. Any complaints you all have, please contact me, and I will take them up with Republic immediately.
Desiree, what's our plan, just from a communication standpoint and such?
I was going to ask Mr. Rudd to address, you know, the county will do a lot of the communication effort direct to residents and their residences. We'll definitely support and enhance that through our efforts, but if you don't mind speaking to your plans.
Yeah. We're looking at mailers, social media outlet, and possibly even phone calls. You know, we're working with Republic. They're going to do some efforts as well. We're talking about going around putting out signs, street signs, to let people know. And any other thoughts the city has on how to get the word out, we're open to it.
One question, Mr. Rudd. There seems to be a lot of confusion, at least among residents, when there's a holiday on a Monday. Does that change the collection day on Thursday?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Typically, it does not change it. There's very few holidays, and we will be sending out a calendar that shows which holidays do change, but typically, unless it's a major holiday, it's not going to change the schedule.
So is this going to be every week now, or is it still every other week in the off-season?
It'll be every other week in off-season, every week from Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Desiree, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For coming tonight. Yep. Welcome. Item five, seems like it's been a while since we've had a council meeting, so we've got a lot of minutes. You can see the ones listed there, approval of previous meeting's minutes. We're not going to, I won't read each of the line items if we can have a motion, and if the motion can include, to include citizen comments with these meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing that I wanted to change. Special City Council meeting, short-term rental workshop, January the 9th. I'm quoted in the minutes of that as being in, you know, actually misquoted in some way. If we go back and look at the video, I made a statement that I was certainly in favor of what I'd heard at the listening workshops. I did not come out and say that I was unalterably or any other way opposed to any caps at all. So Nicole, I would just ask if we could go back and listen to that video, that portion of the video where I made my comments?
If you could, would it be possible for you to email me exactly where you're pointing to in the minutes? Because that will help...
I will. It's about 25 minutes in, but I will go in and do that.
Okay.
Okay? But that would be the only thing that I would want to see changed, if we could. That way, the comments that are on record would more accurately reflect what I actually said.
And Mr. Councilwoman Gogian also emailed me something similar to that, so I'll go back and review.
Same.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
Same set of minutes, John.
That same meeting, yeah. I've already emailed.
Okay. So those will be changed and edited.
You'll tell me exactly where it is, so I can go back and listen to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other edits or comments on the minutes? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, old business, none. Item seven, new business. Item A has been withdrawn, so we don't need to take that up tonight. Item B is consideration of recommendation from the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee to grant $30,000 to the Exchange Club for the construction of the seawall and walkway. We have a motion and a second. We can get to discussion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Was this recommendation or ATAX made in December?
In November.
Okay, November. Got it.
And just by way of comment, this advisory committee has generally had $50,000 to hand out as far as requests. They have, to date, and again, it's fiscal year, July through June, so to date, they've already done $41,000, so this would put them significantly over budget. That's just an FYI. We can certainly approve it, approve part of it now, push some of it to the new fiscal year, or however you want to go. So any discussion or comments, or, Desiree, sorry, anything, Dad?
Ms. Robbie Berg from the Exchange Club is here to answer any questions that you may have on the application her and Kitty Riley presented to the ATAX Committee, so they'd be prepared to answer any specific questions about the project, if you have any.
Could I ask a question about the budget first?
Sure.
Is there additional money in the ATAX pool to cover this, or would we be over budget this year if we...
So the fund balance, the state accommodations tax fund balance has about, has an excess from what was budgeted, so you all could approve an unbudgeted or above-budget expenditure, above and beyond the $50,000 that are included. That line item is a placeholder. We've kind of used the same amount year over year, but you all could certainly approve an over-budget expenditure. We have a strong fund balance in the state ATAX Committee, so it would support that, but that's a decision point that you all could make.
So it's, the funds are available, but it's more than we had budgeted for this...
That's correct.
Okay. Rusty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question we had that came up was in regards to ADA compliance on the new boardwalk, seawall, that area there, so I'm hoping that we've got some information there. And I see Ms. Berg raising her hand, so maybe we could get that clarified. We certainly do want to make sure that anything that we approve is fully ADA compliant. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you all for considering approval of this $30,000 this evening. I appreciate it very much. The ADA question did come up, and I checked with our project manager. He then checked with Grandscapes. Our wall is completed, and we are now starting the, in the application, it was to be a four-foot walkway. We found out we needed a 10-foot setback from the wall, so it has increased in price, but, so our total of what we wanted and applied, or was saying all of this would cost was $228,000 when we came in November, and it's now to $261,000, of which our board did approve of going forward. As to the ADA question, we have a six-foot walkway now that's 246 in linear feet, and then also joining that is a four-foot synthetic turf that is also appropriate for wheelchair. We have taken some of our parking away, and we now have three spots, and with the square footage of our parking, that is what was recommended for approval of ADA, and so we have those three disabled. They will be signed, and then adjacent to that, we have gravel that is the 789 permeable and impacted, so that, again, that area is ADA-approved and wheelchair-accessible.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, or, Desiree or Douglas, anything to add?
What is the public's access to the Exchange Club and this boardwalk?
It's, you pull in the driveway, and it's right there. We have actually, next to the disabled parking, we have extended the walkway that is even there, this next to the building, and so you just drive up, and with any of the parking, it's just right in front of the parking, so highly accessible. And we encourage the public.
And Desiree, just from a change in process, I guess, for our advisory committee for next fiscal year, we're taking requests now, and we'll approve all at one time before the year, or early part of the fiscal year, I guess, right?
Yes, that's correct. Historically, the process is throughout the year. Any applications that are received for a piece of the $50,000 that are budgeted would happen as they come, and as they were received, they were presented to the ATAX Committee, and then a recommendation would come to you all. We have since changed that process to do it once a year. The deadline for applications for FY '24 is January 31st, so the ATAX Committee is going to be reviewing all applications at the same time and making a recommendation to you all to then incorporate those that are recommended, that you want to fund, in the FY '24 budget. So that's coming up soon.
Got you. Thank you.
Some very small token of our appreciation for your service. So, thank you very much.
Very briefly, some close to 23 years ago, I was hired by the recreation staff to become grounds and maintenance supervisor. I quickly learned who I could count on. We worked through interdepartmental a lot back then, and we crossed a lot of apparatus. There was a big tractor there. We did a lot of things together. But operationally, I knew that Joe was the man who did the day-to-day operations. He and I quickly became business partners, friends, and we got along very well. And we worked hand-in-hand together with me borrowing equipment, taking it to the rack, bringing it back. So, I had a relationship established, and some year and a half later, I was fortunate enough to take on the responsibility of the public works department. And that relationship continued to grow. I knew that if I had to leave for any reason, that day-to-day operations would carry on. He knew this island. He knew all the residents of the island. And those relationships, we cannot match. We can certainly replace the job, but we can't match the relationships that Joe built with all these residents. And that's what's so important and key, is the longevity of the, all of these public works staff. The staffing, and we have low turnover in the public works department, and a lot of that is due to Joe and his leadership. Thank you, Joe.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation of a request from Charleston County Recycling to change the recycling collection date from Wednesdays to Thursdays starting April 1st. With us tonight is Randall Rudd, Director of Charleston County Environmental Management Department.
Thank you for allowing me to attend council. I appreciate that very much. I am Randy Rudd. I'm the new Director of Environmental Management for Charleston County. And as the mayor noticed, we would like to request the council's consideration of changing the collection day for recyclables from the current Wednesday to Thursday. This will allow us to keep that schedule year-round, even during the summer period. So, that during that period between Memorial Day and Labor Day, all collections would remain on Thursday. The original program, last year, as I understand it, you know, Republic collected one Wednesday, the county collected the other Wednesday to fill that role. But the county's now out of collections. So, we've worked with Republic, and it's, they're not capable of keeping it on Wednesday. So, we felt that rather than having one week on Wednesday and one week on Thursday, it would make a lot more sense just to switch to Thursday. So, that's the request we're making.
Aaron, I know you are the messenger tonight. What will this do to consistency of service? You know, since the outsources happen, you know, I don't think we'd, anybody would deny that there's been some spotty consistent service on the island. What's this gonna do?
Yes, sir. That was, that was my primary directive when I got to the county, was to try to improve that. We've been working with Republic. They've added routes. They've added drivers. Over the past couple of months, things seem to have gotten a lot better. This will definitely help with that by keeping it on the same days. We're gonna be able to keep same drivers on those routes and improve consistency. And, you know, I'm working with city staff. Any complaints y'all have, please contact me, and I will take them up with Republic immediately.
Desiree, what's our plan, just from a communication standpoint and such?
I was gonna ask Mr. Rudd to address, you know, the county will do a lot of the communication effort direct to residents and their residences. We'll definitely support and enhance that through our efforts, but if you don't mind speaking to your plans.
Yeah. We're, we're looking at mailers, social media outlet, and possibly even phone calls. You know, we're, we're working with Republic. They're gonna do some efforts as well. We're talking about going around putting out signs, street signs, to let people know. And any other thoughts the city has on how to get the word out, we're open to it.
One question, Mr. Rudd. There seems to be a lot of confusion, at least among residents, when there's a holiday on a Monday. Does that change the collection day on Thursday?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Typically, does not change it. There's very few holidays, and we, we will be sending out a calendar that shows which holidays do change. But typically, unless it's a major holiday, it's not gonna change the schedule.
Is this gonna be every week now, or is it still every other week in the off-season?
It'll be every other week in off-season, every week from Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Desiree, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For coming tonight. Yep. Welcome. Item five, seemed like it's been a while since we've had a council meeting. So, we've got a lot of minutes. You can see the ones listed there, approval of previous meetings' minutes. We're not gonna, I won't read each of the line items, so if we can have a motion, and if the motion can include, to include citizen comments with these meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing that I wanted to change. Special City Council meeting, short-term rental workshop, January the 9th. I'm quoted in the minutes of that as, as being in, you know, I actually misquoted in some, in some way. If we go back and look, look at the video, I made a statement that I was certainly in favor of what I'd heard at the listening workshops. I did not come out and say that I was unalterably or any other way opposed to any caps at all. So, Nicole, I would just ask if we could go back and listen to that video, that portion of the video where I made my comments?
If you could, would it be possible for you to email me exactly where you're pointing to in the minutes? Because that will help.
I will. It's about 25 minutes in, but I will go in and do that.
Okay.
Okay? But that would be the only thing that I would want to see changed if we could. That way, the comments that are on record would more accurately reflect what I actually said.
And Mr. Councilman Vagoshian also emailed me something similar to that, so I'll go back and review both. Same.
That, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
In that same one.
In that same, that same meeting, yeah. I've already emailed.
Okay. So, those will be changed and edited.
If you'll tell me exactly where it is, I can go back and listen to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other edits or comments on the minutes? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item six, old business, none. Item seven, new business. Item A has been withdrawn, so we don't need to take, take that up tonight. Item B is consideration of recommendation from the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee to grant $30,000 to the Exchange Club for the construction of the seawall and walkway. We have a motion and a second. We can get to discussion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Was this, was this recommendation or ATAX made in December?
In November.
Okay, November. Got it.
And just by way of comment, this advisory committee has generally had $50,000 to hand out as far as requests. They have to date, and again, it's fiscal year, July through June. So, to date, they've already done $41,000. So, this would put them significantly over budget. That's just an FYI. We can certainly approve it, approve part of it now, push some of it to the new fiscal year, or however you want to go. So, any discussion or comments or, or Desiree, sorry, anything to add?
Ms. Robbie Berg from the Exchange Club is here to answer any questions that you may have on the application her and Kitty Riley presented to the ATAX Committee. So, they'd be prepared to answer any specific questions about the project, if you have any.
Could I ask a question about the budget first?
Go ahead, Jen.
Is there additional money in the ATAX pool to, to cover this, or would we be over-budget this year if we?
You, so the fund balance, the state accommodations tax fund balance has about, has an excess from what was budgeted. So, you all could approve an unbudgeted or above-budget expenditure, above and beyond the $50,000 that are included. That line item is a placeholder. We've kind of used the same amount year over year. But you all could certainly approve an over-budget expenditure. We have a strong fund balance in the state ATAX Committee, so it would support that. But that's a, a decision point that you, that you all could make.
So, it's, the funds are available, but it's more than we had budgeted for this item.
That's correct.
Okay.
Rusty.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question we had that came up was in regards to ADA compliance on the new boardwalk, seawall, that area there. So, I'm hoping that we've got some information there. And I see Ms. Berg raising her hand, so maybe we could get that clarified. We certainly do want to make sure that anything that we approve is fully ADA compliant. Thank you.
Yes. And thank you all for considering approval of this $30,000 this evening. Appreciate it very much. The ADA question did come up, and I checked with our project manager. He then checked with Grandscapes. Our wall is completed, and we are now starting the, in the application, it was to be a four-foot walkway. We found out we needed a 10-foot setback from the wall, so it has increased in price. But, so, our total of what we wanted and applied, or was saying, all of this would cost was $228,000 when we came in November, and it's now to $261,000, of which our board did approve of going forward. As to the ADA question, we have a six-foot walkway now that's 246 in linear feet. And then also, journeying, joining that is a four-foot synthetic turf that is also appropriate for wheelchair. We have taken some of our parking away, and we now have three spots. And with the square footage of our parking, that is what was recommended for approval of ADA. And so, we have those three disabled. They will be signed. And then adjacent to that, we have gravel that is the 789 permeable and impacted. So, that, again, that area is ADA-approved and wheelchair-accessible.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or, Desiree or Douglas, anything to add?
What is the public's access to the Exchange Club and this boardwalk?
It's, you pull in the driveway, and it's right there. We have actually, next to the disabled parking, we have extended the walkway that is even there, this next to the building. And so, you just drive up, and with any of the parking, it's just right in front of, of the parking. So, highly accessible. And we encourage the public.
And Desiree, just from a change in process, I guess, for our advisory committee for next fiscal year, we're taking requests now, and we'll approve all at one time before the year, or early part of the fiscal year, I guess, right?
Yes, that's correct. Historically, the process is throughout the year. Any applications that are received for a piece of the $50,000 that are budgeted would happen as they come. And as they were received, they were presented to the ATAX Committee, and then a recommendation would come to you all. We have since changed that process to do it once a year. The deadline for applications for FY '24 is January 31st. So, the ATAX Committee is going to be reviewing all applications at the same time and making a recommendation to you all to then incorporate those that are recommended, that you want to fund in the FY '24 budget. So, that's coming up soon.
Gotcha. Thank you. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Robbie, thank you for coming.
Thank you as well.
Yeah. Item C is consideration of recommendation from the Environmental Advisory Committee to change the policy regarding student committee members. If you recall, when we established this committee, year-plus, year and a half or so ago, there were two student, that are, two students that are a member of this committee. And I think, just due to school schedules and graduations, I think it's been noted and obvious that we need to change the bylaws, or if you will, and John, I'll let you take it if you want, have these students really be an ad hoc member, not count towards quorum or be a voting member.
Yeah, that's correct.
Anything?
I think just one of them, though, right? Or are we doing both as not quorum?
I think it would be both.
Both.
So, you have, the bylaws require a college student and a high school student.
And it was very difficult to get the attendance, especially if, I think, from the college student primarily, but both were sporadic. So, I think to take them out of the quorum, but we'd still have the opportunity for students to participate in the committee. Because it can be an educational and valuable exercise for them as well. And I think you may have somebody, is that right, that you, we want to?
We, we do have somebody interested, local high school student, Chris Burrell's daughter, Jordan Burrell, has expressed an interest, and we think would be a good addition.
Yep.
So, we, go ahead, Desiree.
Vote.
Yeah. Do we do a motion yet or not? All right. Do we need a motion on this?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
Second.
All right. Any other questions, thoughts?
They would continue to be one-year appointments. So, they would be appointed a year, but they would not be voting members of the committee.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item D is consideration of recommendation from the Environmental Advisory Committee to engage with Smart Recycling to begin a food composting program. Douglas or John, who wants to?
Douglas.
Yeah. I'll, I'll explain this. This is a pilot program that is being operated currently through the city, a partnership with the City of Charleston and Smart Recycling. And what the service provides is composting. And it would be a bin, a food composting bin, similar to the glass recycling bin that we've, we've done with Fisher Recycling. And the, the Environmental Advisory Committee's felt very good about that program. We're hearing good things that the usage is up. Each month, it's growing, so they're feeling very good about that. This would be an additional, probably eventually would be four cans, two at the Harris Teeter area, and two at the Marina, adjacent to the Fisher recycling cans. And there, there's a bit of a program that would go along with using this composting bins, where anybody wanting to use the, the bins would need to go through a training exercise, and then you're given a key, basically a code to use it. They don't want, they don't want it to be misused with, you know, food that shouldn't go in there, that goes in there and makes it unusable or rancid. So, the group heard from Smart Recycling, was very impressed with the program, thinks that it would be a, a good addition to what's already being done, and kind of bring some synergy between those two. If you're coming with glass, you could also come with compost. The materials would go to Charleston County composting facility, and then it, and then it's, eventually it's sold, but it's gone, it goes back on, you know, the earth, obviously, and as fertilizer, and not into the landfill. So, it's keeping all of these materials out of ultimately going to the landfill. Cost is, sorry, cost is $4.80 a month. That, the Environmental Advisory Committee is advising that for the first few months, we do half of that. So, it would start at $2.40 a month. We expect, though, if usage is high, that we would go from two cans to four cans pretty quickly. So, we've just kind of assumed that we would consider $4.80 a month for one year. After a year, we would, we're gonna collect that on the usage, see how popular it is, and then potentially come back, if it's a success, and ask that you consider it again.
Rusty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, timing-wise, are we looking at doing something pretty much right away, or?
I think they're ready to go. We, they do want to move the cans from the side of the Harris Teeter to adjacent to the Carmen Arbunch Park. They feel like beside the Harris Teeter, it's been a little bit obscured and challenging to find for people. They feel like if the cans were right there at that driveway next to the vet's office, adjacent to Carmen Arbunch Park, they would be a little more visible, and they would be right there as you kind of pull in. We, to answer your question, we think it would be as soon as we could get them moved over to that portion and deployed by Smart Recycling.
So, Fisher wants to move the glass recycling, and we're just gonna put this?
That's correct. We'd move both at the same time.
Glass recycling would go in the same area, your Carmen bunch?
That's correct.
So, another question, having, having been in the retail food business for 40-plus years, anything that you put food in, dispose of food, it has a tendency, particularly in the warm months, to really smell rankly, so to speak. So, what kind of safeguards do we have in place? I'm not looking for all the minutia. I know that, I don't want to get in the weeds.
Yeah. I, I would tell you that their presentation to the Environmental Advisory Committee was generally focused on the issue that you're referencing. They put a liner in each bag, and they insist they won't do collection any less than twice a week. If it sits, if it sits for, you know, a full week, they feel like that's a limit. So, between the liner and the frequency of the collections, and the training that's telling people what to not put in there that would, I think, smell it up and make it rancid, they, they say they have very little issues. Their truck also carries around, part of what they'll, what they do is they actually wash the can each time they service it. So, it's being cleaned twice a week. So, that clearly is their primary objective when they service it. They want it to be clean, tidy, not smelling. So, I think that, I think the group felt good that that was gonna be addressed adequately.
And my final question is the training piece of it. So, to utilize it, you've got to know how to use it to be able to utilize it.
That's correct. That's how you get access to the lock on the seat.
And we have a process that would be put in place to communicate that, so.
That's correct. That's correct.
They don't just show it with a bin full of food and dump it beside the dumpster.
That's correct.
Or in the glass recycling bin.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the contract, I haven't seen the contract. I don't, I don't think it's in our, our package. But can we get out of the contract if it's not working out, if it, if it does smell, or if it's attracting rodents, or coyotes, or whatever?
They have told us that there is a certain amount of effort to add us to the pilot system. And they, and I think that, I think the contract requires a year. So, my, I guess my layman's answer would be, I think we would be contractually obligated for one year to do it. If, you know, I don't know how, if, if it was rancid, if there are rodents, if we had problems.
I mean, the rancid's one issue, but the other isn't, just like we had with the compost. You're gonna have stray cats, and rats, and potentially coyotes, and we're right, we're snug up to residential area, right there by the park.
What I would suggest is if the city council is agreeable in moving in that direction, we can have our city attorney review our contract and make, you know, add provisions to that effect. I think that would be, you know, reasonable.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, the, the current budget included $15,000 for initiatives that come from the Environmental Advisory Committee, $9,600 were allocated for their glass recycling project. So, we have five months out of the fiscal year, $2,400, you know, $4.80 a month. So, we would have money in the budget in their current line item to support this. Just wanted to make, put, have that on the record.
Okay.
Is this program being done around other places successfully?
Yes. Yes. Sullivan's Island Elementary is doing it. They also do it for commercial, you know, for restaurants that want to compost. So, it's being done, I think Folly Beach is, is about to start at City of Charleston. Yeah. So, we're, we're one of kind of many starting up with the program. I know Folly Beach is doing it.
Other questions? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
And we're, sorry, I guess the motion would be to approve the, the 400, what is it for, was it 40?
$4.80.
A month?
On a pilot basis.
But only paying, starting off only paying two?
Right. Until, yeah. Until the need triggers a second can, and then we would automatically extend to 4.80.
But the, but the, the contract is just for, the, starting off is just for the two?
That's correct. Yeah. And they have, they have no prob, we've, we've verified with them that if we, if it stays with two, and we never need four, it would stay at 2.40.
Okay. And then the lawyers are gonna get us an opt-out of?
And we understand that you all don't want to do it if, if there's no way to get out early for reasons like rodent, or smell, or other kind of nuisance-type scenario.
I think so.
Which I don't think, I don't think they'll have a problem with.
Yeah. Good. Thank you, Douglas. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, hard to believe, fiscal '24 budget calendar is in your packet. Just to run through it fairly high-level and fairly quickly. This month, staff will review the 10-year capital plan with each of the department heads. We'll come back to the second bullet under January in just a moment. February, staff will continue to refine the five-year projection of revenues and expenditures and trends, and how they will affect our fund balances. Committees will be reviewing departmental 10-year capital plans during the month of February as well. In February, city council will identify any budget priorities that they may have. March, standing committees will review each departmental operating budget. We'll have a budget workshop that'll hopefully just fold into one of our current city council workshops. Public notice published in Post and Courier. April, city council reviews and approves final budget, final draft of the budget. We'll have the first reading in April. In May, public hearing and the second reading, and then our fiscal year begins July 1st. So, process we have followed at least the last three or four years, I guess, from a timing standpoint. So, at a committee level, you're gonna talk a lot of minutia, but is there anything tonight, just from a project or initiative, special project or initiative, that we need to start thinking about or researching that's top of mind for you? Rusty, you got it?
No, I'm sorry. We had the, the board, did you mention the boardwalks are part of this also, right? The, the additional boardwalks, is that part of this particular?
There's an amount of money in the budget every year for boardwalks. Is that what you're asking?
But the additional boardwalks that we've discussed previously, like from 2nd to 9th, is that part of this particular project?
Boardwalks or crosswalks?
Yeah.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk. I'm sorry.
Totally different, yeah.
I think, I think you may be referring to the transportation sales tax.
Okay.
Coming next.
My computer went out on me.
I could hear it beeping.
Yeah. So, this is, yeah. So, we've got four boardwalks specifically. There's an amount every year in there, just like there is for undergrounding other utility lines with.
You did the same thing I did. You called them boardwalks also. It should be crosswalk.
No, there's money in the budget for boardwalks.
Okay.
Every year, just like there is for undergrounding utility lines.
All right.
All right. Next item is consideration of proposed, I'm sorry, Desiree, anything on the budget?
No, sir.
You're good. Item F, consideration of proposed project request for the transportation sales tax fiscal '24 allocation program. We talked about this in our workshop earlier this month. You've got a page in your packet that outlines the amounts, the available funding. The deadline is February 15th. And we've done, we've narrowed it down to three items in order of priority. And I think we're just planning to submit a request for all three and see what we get, see what our net catches. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item A.
Mr. Mike?
Yes, sir.
Oh, item A above, we skipped over that. Was that withdrawn?
It was withdrawn.
I always needed to get that on the record.
I said that.
He just thanked you so much.
It's time zone from here to there, Blair. Item A, boards and commission reports, Board of Zoning Appeals, minutes are attached. Planning Commission, minutes are attached. Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Environmental Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Item nine, ordinances, resolutions, and petitions, none. We do not have a need for executive session, so there being no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Off-record.